We call this meeting the Oskaloosa City Council Order. Today is March twenty first, two thousand sixteen. Let's start with the invocation by Pastor William Queen. Jubilee Family Church.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. We ask for blessing upon this meeting, blessing upon these people, blessing upon our city. Just give us cooperation, consensus, and understanding of wisdom in every issue, in everything that needs to be done. And let us always remember as servants, we're here to serve the people and to be stewards of the resources and to be selfless in our motivations and always do what is right. Father, we ask your blessing now. We ask it in Jesus' name. Amen?
Thank you Pastor. Could you join me in the pledge, please?
Pledge of the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Fernette?
Yes.
Callagury?
Jimenez?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Percy?
Here.
Wally?
Here.
Yates?
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is an opportunity to receive comments from the community. And whether or not they're included on the current agenda, the community is encouraged to come and speak before the Mayor and City Council. Ask a few statements briefly. Time is limited to no more than three minutes. Any questions that are to be asked of the city staff or the council members or the mayor, we ask that that be asked prior to the meeting and away from it so that way the concerns can be properly researched and answered away from the meeting. Comments are to be directed to the Mayor and City Council only. Now, we don't have any public hearings on the agenda tonight. So if you are here to talk to any of the other items on the agenda, for example, I guess we have the public hearing on twelve sixteen and thirteen oh two Green Street. Yes, we do have that. I guess I was thinking more along the line of the alley improvement project and then also parking restrictions on C. Avenue East between North Hall and South Park. If you would like to speak to those two things, now's a good time to do it. And then I also tell the council members that we all reserve the right to call out to the audience if we need further information. So with that in mind, is there anyone who would like to speak first?
Mr. Mayor, I'm Larry Claymont. I think I know about you all. You should pretty well know, do I? You know, I've always, on the rare times that I do come to your council chambers for your meeting outside of CNN on TV, and I thank CRI for everything that they do to broadcast you, keeps the public informed. The thing that I find disappointing, and I'm up here to talk about alleys tonight, that was my main reason for coming. Is my timing correct? You said if the public want to talk about the public hearing on alley, is this the time to approach it?
You can talk about anything you would like right now. There is a public hearing having to do with some properties.
Now, you afforded me three minutes.
Yep, here at two fifteen.
Tell you what, it's interesting. Talk about things. So in three minutes, I'm going to ask you four questions. And you can respond. You don't have to respond. But you know, much like the newspaper, I watch Donald Trump. He says, "I watch a lot of TV, I read a lot, and I learn a lot." Well, when I came tonight, I picked up the Herald. And they're selling to alley. And I'm going to be here for your public hearing on it. So let's pass that question right now until that hearing finally. Then I'd like to readdress that issue. Reading the Herald, they're never wrong. They're never wrong. Everything you read in the paper is absolutely the gossip. So I see where the city loaned a contractor eight thousand dollars to a contractor published in the Herald. I'd rather not say the name of the contractor. But I will do as you suggest. I will ask this day. How do you get an eight thousand dollar loan off to a contractor? Still haven't figured that one out under your extension. The next thing that I want to talk about in my remaining minute and a half.
Coming up with fifty seconds.
Well, could you give me just a little patience of letting go beyond the minute?
Depends, but the answer generally is no.
Okay, the citizen, you had a citizen arrested by the name of Jim Raines. He went to jail for two nights. He's a citizen. I spoke on his behalf here at one of your council meetings about a year and a half ago. I said, "Leave the man alone." He just spent two nights in jail, folks. You arrested him. I'm upset about it. I'm angry. I'm not Donald Trump, but I'm angry. So I think I'm going to stop right there because I think my anger is starting to boil a little bit. Your public meetings, your town hall meetings. Dave, remember I told you that there was a term? And I said someday you would re-hear it. It's time to raise the debt. People are dying. It's time to raise the debt. I don't like your three-minute allocation of time to the public. But I will sit down, I will honor your word, I will respect your offer. But you have got me angry. Because I am not going to get an answer from you on who got eight thousand dollars. I'm not going to get an answer from you tonight why you had a citizen arrested and put in jail and incarcerated, and I'm angry. I'll sit down until the public hear you. Thank you very much for your three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to speak this time?
I'm Sandra Bottenfield, and I live at one oh five Sheriff Avenue on the corner of North Market and Sheriff. We built this house there forty-three years ago. So I've seen a lot of things come and go, including the new street they put in twenty-seven, almost twenty-eight years ago. My contention is not that we don't need the sidewalk. It is that we don't need them in our area. I probably can count less than a dozen people, pedestrians, that I see in a year's time on our street. It is not a street that's used by pedestrians. It's used by the school buses. That's about our only traffic. If you come, I've got seventeen and a half minutes that we have traffic. The rest of it, our neighborhood is really pretty quiet and pretty disciplined. You talk about the kids going too fast on the street. Yes, we have a few that like to buzz that little hump and make it pop. But I think they do that no matter how wide that street is. I really don't see the need for a sidewalk. It isn't that I'm opposed to putting it in my front yard. I mean, I've got the room, some of the neighbors do not, but we do. It's that I think that it's needed, and I think that's a lot of money for maybe twelve or fifteen pedestrians in a year's time. The kids that are in middle school, as soon as they're fourteen, they drive, whether I like it or not, and they wouldn't be caught dead walking. I haven't seen a bicycle on that street since they put the trail in, which is good. That's what it's for. I really, as I said, wherever you would put that sidewalk, whether it was across the street from us or in our front yard, I still think that's a lot of money to put in there. And I would like to see those school buses put back onto Glendale and on Third where they were supposed to go when we put in that heavy pavement in the first place. Then our street wouldn't be broken up. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mark Willett. No one know me, but I'm just here to speak briefly on behalf of the Alley Project. Just in the last year and three quarters that we've been back, I've been extremely impressed by what we're doing as a city. We're tearing down old houses, we're getting rid of them. We're putting up new complexes to not only improve how our city looks, but also the people that we can attract to this city. We're both living and then further in entertainment in what we've done with the local option sales tax ballot and through your support. For that, I greatly appreciate everything that you've done. And I think this Alley Project is a big deal. I think it's an opportunity to again take another step towards what we're trying to accomplish as a city of Oskaloosa. And that's to provide ourselves with opportunities to create attractions, to bring people in here, hopefully to stay and live, but also to attract people here to the community to recreate and enjoy our town and hopefully someday consider moving here. So thank you for everything you've done, and I'd ask for your support on this project as well.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Main. I also wanted to speak on support of the Alley Project as well. I moved here a couple of years ago with a family of three children and quite frankly, impressed with what the community had to offer compared to other county seats across Iowa. And there's a lot of great things at Oskaloosa. This would be another added benefit to the town square and just a common gathering spot. What I wanted to speak on behalf of is Vicki Colette, who's in the back row. She said, "Oh, Vicki." Her and I started a nonprofit here this winter. It's called the Golden Goose Club. And this past week, we had our first quarterly meeting. And thirty-six of our forty-one members that were present at that first meeting voted in support of that project. This local club is a nonprofit that created the premise to support community betterment projects. The Alley Project aligns perfectly with that. And I just wanted to share to the council that we would support that. And there's thirty-six members of our club that also support that. It's taking space that's right now just pretty dead, really, unattractive, and can be used if you have to buy, and it's saving cost of thousands and thousands and, you know, a hundred thousand dollars. We can take private funds and donations and advertise this for local businesses to create a space that can be enjoyed by everybody. So we appreciate your support and everything you guys do to make Oskaloosa better. Thank you.
If you like. If I'm not mistaken, you not only supported it with your votes, but you put some financial backing behind it as well, correct?
Correct. The premise of the Golden Goose Club is each member that belongs to it is willing to donate one hundred dollars a quarter. And then each quarter, those members gather together at the third floor of the library to vote on what project they'd like to donate that quarter's funds to. So, yeah, we're pretty excited about what we can accomplish, though.
Hi, thanks for letting me give my opinion. I'm April Lurski, and I'm the manager at Look Bolt. And we are a retailer trying to make a go of it in downtown Oskaloosa. I would like to think that we'll all keep in mind that this area, the alley is first and foremost located in the retail area of Oskaloosa. It would be my sincere hope that with effort, we can bring more shoppers into our downtown area. And with increased retail activity, we will also be able to attract more downtown businesses. It's not a pipe dream, but it's an attainable goal. Studies will show that more time spent in the shopping district will lead to more spending. More spending means more tax dollars to spend on Oskaloosa projects and more reasons for new businesses to locate here. The Alley Project is a step in the right direction for downtown Oskaloosa. It will provide another reason to sit and enjoy the shops that we already have. The naysayers will cite the fact that it will become a gathering place for loiterers, but those people already exist in downtown Oskaloosa, and they always will. What it will hopefully inject is a new sense of community pride and a working together of different entities to make it happen. The Golden Goose Club, the Alley Cat Ladies, and the different businesses that are already coming together to provide boxed meals available for purchase and for programming of the space show that. This is a win-win for our downtown. And while change can be difficult, this change will be for the good for all types of different peoples, groups, and will cost the city anything. Please vote yes for the Alley Project. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Colette Ferguson. I am the manager of Bridal Dreams, which is the building that is adjacent to the alley. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the building owners who are at their winter home and are out of state. The building owners do oppose the project. Not a beautification project. That's something that we think sounds incredible and wonderful. And we do appreciate all the time and energy that's been put into this planning. It is a beautiful design. Our concerns basically maintain around what the alley is supposed to be. An alley is supposed to be a place that is for function and usage to the building as it's adjacent to. This building, we are adjacent to it. We own a large retail space on the bottom half. But our main concern is the top. We have ten apartments that at any point in time house between twenty and thirty people. Those residents are people who have their families here. They inject money into the economy. And we're concerned of a lot of things about inconveniences and safety issues that could be concerned. Our main safety issue is if a fire would break out in the front hallway of the upstairs. We understand and we realize that fires are fought from the street side. But if a fire encased the front hallway upstairs, the tenants would not be able to use the front steps or the fire escape, which is all on the same hallway. Fire officials would have to come in with rescue personnel and take these people probably from their windows. And the windows face this alley project. At what cost? If something happens to a person, if they're injured or in heaven forbid, if somebody is killed because we are not able to act prudently to get those people out of their apartments? This is one of our concerns. Another is the noise issue. These people that live in these apartments have families. They have children, children that want, need to be put to bed at night, children that reside there during the day. We feel that there's going to be a large noise issue for these tenants. And again, we have to take into concern our tenants. You know, we do not want tenants to leave our building because of these issues. These tenants provide income to the building owners. So this is a major concern. We also are concerned about the relocation of the dumpsters. I know that they're only going to be moved around the corner, the other direction. But to our tenants and to ourselves as a business, that we have large amounts of garbage, we have large amounts of cardboard that have to be taken out. We would have to go out our front door. And I know that they wouldn't want us walking through the middle of this project with our stinky garbage and our large boxes of cardboard. We'd have to walk to the south corner. Then we'd have to walk to the end of the west corner. Then we'd have to come back north in the alley to get to our dumpsters. Our tenants would also have to do the same thing. There's no way to access the back alley except for that fire escape, which is an emergency exit only. We do not want our tenants on that fire escape unless there is an emergency. If they took their garbage down those steps without our knowledge and they left the door propped open at the bottom to get back in, this also opens up the area of people being drawn to this as a gathering place for more vandalism, more theft. We don't want to see that happen to our building, any of the buildings. We don't want to see that happen to our tenants. Okay, thank you very much.
I would remind you, the council can also call on you later on.
Sure, I appreciate it. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Hello, my name is Jane Kelberman. And first, I am a Lytong member of Oskaloosa. Secondly, I'm a licensed mental health provider in Oskaloosa. I provide services to adults and children in the Mahaska and surrounding areas. So I have patients or clients coming in from a town hall, often coming in through town. I direct them through our square to my office, which is located right off of the square on one two two North Market. I also am a business owner, professional business owner in town. I am pro empowerment and pro improvement, both in my practice, my mental health practice, and also for myself. But I also hold that standard for our community as well. I like our community, I love our community. I grew up here, I'm raising my children here, and I have a profession here. What I do every day is work in helping and empowering people. Oftentimes, when I work with kids, they've been in classrooms all day. They've been enclosed all day. It's very nice to have the opportunity to walk up to the square. I often walk into Smoky Road. Having that outside facility for me would be wonderful. A place to take the kids, to have an inviting place for them to interact, relax. We can sit and visit. They're not confined in a space. They enjoy going up and running around the square, talking on the benches up in the square, and we walk back. And it's a very nice community sense. I see this as an opportunity to improve the overall look of our downtown. I believe as a business owner in our downtown that when you walk through our square and our alley, that it sets, when I walk with clients, that it sets a positive energy. It sets a tone. And having that sense of community that you'll get and that that community adds is kind of a nonverbal communication of pride. It means that we believe in the betterment of ourselves, which is the message that I'm always trying to give everybody that I work with. And I encourage that. And I believe that it's important that our community shows that we value that as well. I believe also that this project is incredibly remarkable because it's self-sustaining and also that it is available to the entire community. That's one of the things that I like to see and run into people that I wouldn't normally run around or meet or see on regular, you know, certain events or activities. So I like the sense. I like the idea of having a place where people can be a community, where people can come back and visit and look around. So I really encourage this for the community empowerment and improvement, this creative innovative idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to speak? Okay, moving on then. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. These are items that are routine in nature. There's no discussion particularly anticipated. I do have a couple of items that have been asked to be pulled. Received work from Tom Wally debate. But there's one in there about selecting a new building inspection firm. And then also another one having to do with a grant application for the ten fifteen bus. And so I'm going to go ahead and pull those off the consent agenda.
I think my hands are in the ground.
Oh, for the ten fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay. So as far as the inspection process going on that whole?
K and N.
And then also tucked into there, you'll notice that item G is the appointment to the Civil Service Commission, reappearance of Ken Steeman. And item I, resolution fixing date for a meeting on the authorization of a loan agreement. Issue us of not to exceed one point eight million dollar deal refunding capital loan notes. That's to call in some existing debt savings. It's estimated a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in interest. So with that, do I have a motion for the consent agenda removing K and N? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Callagury?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Fernette?
Yes.
Going over to item K, this is, I believe, the vote of Oskaloosa Rides. It was to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an application to the Mahaska County Community Foundation to provide funding to Oskaloosa Rides for a fixed transit bus ride. Oskaloosa Rides completed its two-year program, two-year pilot program at the end of June of two thousand sixteen. The city of Oskaloosa is currently working on funding sources to provide funding to expand the bus ride for five days a week. Total cost for one year for five days a week is thirty-one thousand two hundred dollars. And that would be paid to ten fifteen Regional Transit Agency who administers and operates the route. So anyway, what were the concerns, Tom?
Two things for discussion. Where the balance of the money was going to come from. Two, I know there's a need, but I'm not sure if it's sending the right message. You're going to have to decide here.
It would be useful to the rest of the council to know what your thoughts are.
Is it needed by the majority of the people? And along with that, would, now, where's the rest of the money coming from?
So Mayor, Council, the approved budget includes, I had recommended that we reduce ten thousand dollars of our contribution towards the three-day-a-week program. The balance would be made up through donations. In our discussion with the work group, which includes Mahaska on Partnership, United Way, the county, and who else? Area fifteen, ten fifteen. So the idea is that we'd like to see if there's enough support within the community to raise thirty thousand dollars so that the service action can be implemented from three days a week. During our study session, there was obviously a lot of discussion about ridership. Do we see a lot of use by the community? And from my perspective, it's a nice amenity to provide. And it serves a population that may not have access to regular vehicle traffic or vehicles. And so is that a good thing or bad? And that's why you're policymaking. But from my perspective, I think it's a good amenity for us, everything to provide. Through this partnering proposal, we're actually reducing what we originally had approved. The budget was to fund the whole payment, eighteen thousand five hundred. So through discussions at the session, we've refined the contribution amount to a lower amount. Now we're seeking partner.
Until that ten thousand dollars, is that going to be paid through donation penalty? Or is that tax dollars? What is that?
Ten thousand come out of the E ten general fund, which is property tax.
That's our donation. That's what I was talking about.
I suggested that it come out of the city manager's office, a split between the city manager's office and the city council.
The regardless of that, it's still, well, the tax dollars for to support people that you feel to be of pride, is that correct?
I think it's to provide that service and whoever wants that access.
So the item agenda, the item on the agenda is to whether or not we want to submit an application for a grant to provide funding for the ten fifteen.
But if we agree to the grant submission, then we also agree to make that the difference. It's by the center.
I guess from my perspective, that has already been provided. There were two objections to that, as Congressman Wally and Jimenez. The rest of the group was for moving the service forward as far as I can.
Yeah, and that was the way the budget was crafted as well, to add that in.
Yes, and we're actually raising the property tax rate as a goal. Because of some changes, we didn't have to raise the property tax rate to pay for that service.
So I'll go ahead and ask, do we have a motion to go ahead and authorize the city manager to apply for the grant?
No movement.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Jimenez?
No.
Moore? Percy?
No.
Wally?
No.
Fernette?
Yes.
Callagury?
Yes.
Okay, I'm giving a tie.
He'll be back as the next one.
Yep.
Wednesday, AM?
Thirty-first.
Next item in, that has to do with consideration of a resolution authorizing the execution agreement for building inspection services. And I'll go ahead and read out the item. The Building Division within the Public Works Department is responsible for managing buildings permit, building construction plan and any building inspection functions for construction projects in the city of Oskaloosa. These services are met by utilizing city staff for all residential type construction and contracting with professional consultants for all commercial type construction and for specific services for city staff. The responsibility of city staff includes all residential type construction to deliver consistent services to a large customer base of residential inspections. This hybrid model of city staff combined with Bean Strength Kim Incorporated would allow the city to utilize the advantage of both staffing models while negating employee turnover that is often prevalent in the Building Inspection Division. City staff does not have the required certifications to perform building inspection services for commercial type construction. The city of Oskaloosa currently has a professional services agreement with Safe Building Compliance and Technology to provide services as all common consultants for the Building Division. However, staff would like to explore these consultant services with a different company, Bean Strength Kim Incorporated. Staff has received positive reviews from various communities that are presently contracted with Bean Strength Kim. Staff is expected to improve communication with customers, provide faster plan reviews, reduce costs for consulting services with Bean Strength Kim Incorporated when compared to Safe Building Compliance and Technology. Therefore, the Public Works Department is requesting to terminate the contract with Safe Building Compliance and Technology and execute a new contract with Bean Strength Kim. So the recommendation we have is to consider approval of the agreement for building inspection services with Bean Strength Kim and then terminate the contract with Safe Building Compliance and Technology. Any thoughts?
Yeah, I'm heated to make you read it. Yeah, I'm heated to make you read it, but the reading that made it transparent that we're doing, so that we all understand. There's been a lot of calls about our construction visits. And I'm all for changing and giving Bean Strength Kim a chance. You know, I'll give the other people what we really need to do, especially in historic areas. Well, I think another area to do that, I don't know that, Mike, you give directions to these inspection companies that we hire and have on-site to do this stuff? Can you give them direction what you really want done? And maybe Safe Building anywhere can do with that.
Within the confines of the contract, sure. I think one of the interesting things I've came across, this particular outfit, was they assume no liability. And as you might recall, there were a couple of instances where we believed they were liable. We had taken the task on that to do their contract language, although we have the ability to communities that are. You know, they're, it's like any relationship that you have with a contractor or somebody supplies or something. You have to manage that relationship and you can't just turn it on and then let it go. And so I suspect there will be times of imperfection even with Bean Strength Kim as there was with Safe Building. We just hope that some of that stuff can be caught in advance. And I think, I think the idea is we're setting the tone a little differently with the Bean Strength Kim outfit than we have with Safe Building. They're more receptive.
And how about sprinkler systems and things of that nature, departments in the second story, second story stuff downtown? And there's something that we can do with that. We've had some calls about that lately, if you want to know?
It's a little unfair to have that conversation, because every case is different. I think, obviously, where there's flexibility, we have flexibility. We provide those options. One of the things that I've mentioned to each of you is that in the event that the state code requires fire sprinklers, we have them, say. It would be my recommendation that we create an incentive program to help downtown redevelopment for using tactics and refinancing. So if somebody wants to reinvest and spend $50,000 to $8,000 more, because it's going to cost a lot more than that, city would provide $50,000 to $8,000, whatever the council would decide, to incent safety improvements that we deem as life safety issues. So it's fire sprinklers for residential properties. So it's upgrading the water mains so that those properties can be served. That would be part of that as well. So that's something that I'd like to see us have a discussion about within the next few months so that it can be ready to go live long.
In my other job, I've worked with codes and construction inspectors for forty-seven years. Codes were originally developed to be the bare minimum, but they've become the maximum. We're all overly regulated when it comes to code. And Tom and I and the city manager, we're speaking with our people, you know, about there's got to be some common sense and there's got to be some discussion, you know, about what's going on. Because Mike says some things aren't black and white, but some things aren't black and white. They're gray as you know what. So, you know, we need somebody that instead of just telling everybody it is the way it is, that we get some discussion out of the deal. And that's...
Exactly. We're a little regulated. You hear a lot about that, and all points are really different. So we just need to be careful if we're doing that.
So the agenda item has to do with getting out the, determining the contract with Safe Building Compliance and Technology and then putting together an agreement with Building Inspection Services, Bean Strength Kim. Do you have a motion supporting that?
Yes.
Okay. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Moore?
Yes.
Perse?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Call adjourned.
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Moving on to the regular agenda. Item A, this is to consider a resolution approving the vacation sale of unused sections of public right-of-way lying between 1216 and 1302 Green Street. Between 816 and 902 South 12th Street and adjacent to 606 Avenue East. There will be a public hearing here. Recently, a number of property owners approached the city with requests to acquire unused portions of the public right-of-way of letting their properties. After city staff investigation, it was verified the public right-of-way is not needed for public use to consider for disposal. First, a fifty-foot by 120-foot public right-of-way in area lying between 1216 and 1302 Green Street. An area zoned R3, multiple family residential, no utilities. There's another one, sixty-foot by 140-foot public right-of-way area lying between 816 and 902 South 12th Street. An area that's zoned R2, urban family residential, and has easements for electric pole guy wire and S U V line that might be needed in the southwest corner. And number three is a fifty-foot by sixty-six-foot section of South Fifth Street. It's lying adjacent to 606 Avenue East. An area zoned as R2, urban family residential, no utilities present. The adjacent property owners expressed they do not want to purchase these areas, but they are willing to acquire ownership. According to Osluza Municipal Code, Section 12.24.060, vacant streets or alleys cannot be disposed of by gift. Therefore, the recommendation is to sell these areas for $1 plus any filing and recording costs. In each case, the adjacent property owners were contacted and offered their right of rights right away. If vacation sale approved, the areas will be divided as shown on the attached location map. Vacation on the areas will not limit access to other properties. None of these properties currently meet the minimum lot width or area for their respective zoning, and so attempts are being made here to build homes on these lots. They would all require variances. Planning zoning at the March 14, 2016 meeting, voted five yes to one no to recommend approval of the vacation sale of the aforementioned unused sections of public right-of-way. So I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would care to speak to any of these properties?
Again, I thank you. I'm Larry Claybaum. I told you, Mayor, that I came here basically to address this issue tonight. I'm speaking on half on the people on Green, or on 12th Street. And I guess I'm going to start out, am I on a three-minute time limit again on this?
No, public hearings do not have a time limit.
Oh, thank you.
However, your reputation can suffer if it goes wrong.
Well, you know, I have a friend, his name's Donald Trump, and I hope, heaven, his name does suffer. Trust me, I do. And there was a guy at Perth Polo Inn a little bit ago, who said he was kind of disappointed with, maybe even the local government. And I probably have some opinion on that, but I'd rather not express that. I came to talk about else. There's a young guy whose parents are en route back.
I do want to interrupt you for a second, though. Are we talking about the properties that are up for sale?
I don't think I misspeak or spoke.
So which property?
I said I came here and I wanted to talk about the property that are being sold tonight at a public hearing.
Okay.
I'd like to make, I probably won't talk about the Green Street one.
Okay.
I'm going to talk about the Fifth Street one.
Okay.
And I'm going to talk about the 12th Street one.
Okay.
Now, now that we have the terms that you are going to allow me to speak under, I would like to do so.
Okay.
So if you're ready, I'm ready.
Fire away. I just wanted to make sure to say y'all on top.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate this. I came here because the people to the north on the 12th Street property. Before I say anything else, could I have a show of hand? Joe, Aaron, Scotty, Tom, Mr. Mayor, Tom Walling. Oh, Mr. Burnett, thank you too for serving your time on the new council. Welcome aboard, thank you. Has anybody been physically to any of these properties? Anybody sitting on the council, have you physically been there? You've seen the property, you've walked on it? You read the Herald at all? The Herald, the other day, I was out of town, I came home, wife had coffee on, she had a paper on the separate table. I read about two alleys that are being vacated, Fifth Street. Ah, that's kind of a concern. 12th Street, that's only about a block and a half from where I live. So I decided to beander over there, and I read the Courier, or I'm sorry, I read the Herald. And it said two alleys are being vacated. Couldn't figure out where the alleys were. So I drove down South Fifth, and this neighbor came out of his house. He saw me, another gentleman, kind of snooping around down there. He came over and he said, "You mind if I ask what you're doing?" We introduced ourselves. He was him, I was me, he was the property owner. I said, "I'm just curious where the alley is." He said, "There isn't any alley." But he pointed out, he says, "I'm buying the property from here to there." I said, "That's a city street." Now, you know, the Herald is really kind of cool. It's a good paper. But sometimes, when they print something, are you selling city streets or are you selling alley? Read the paper, you're selling alley. Come to the council meeting tonight and you're selling street. You can't flip-flop around. Tell we, the citizens, what you're selling.
I read it just a minute ago.
I know you did, but that's not what I read in the paper. Now, I would like you to ask the city attorney, if you would, Mr. Mayor, how do you get access to public information? Mr. Dixon might say to you, you get a form, you fill it out, your question, and we have ten days to respond to it. So the Herald comes out on Monday, the council meeting comes up a few days later, and I have no access to public information about these alleys? Are these streets? So I have to ask Akilish. You have a procession, or you have a procedure when you sell city property. You notify the people by writing. So I would love to ask the city engineer tonight, did you send out notices? Because the one neighbor I talked to happens to be here tonight, he said he didn't get a legal note. It's in the mail. I talked to the other gentleman on the phone on the 12th Street property. He said, "We didn't get a written notice." Now, I can't be in Minneapolis, I can't be at the P and Z, and I can't be at this council meeting, all within a four- or five-day timeframe, and wait for a ten-day response from the city for an application to a copy of public information. It's not physically possible. So I came tonight to express the concerns of the property owner on 12th Street. It adjoins his parents' house. He said, "Are you going to the council meeting?" And I said, "I will, and I will ask the council to produce a copy of the paperwork that the city engineer was to send out." And I would love to see those documents. And I'm going to ask you, now that I've expressed a neighbor's concern, or his parents, who are elderly, who want to be sure that their rights are being protected, that they will buy the north part of that screen up there, that they have the right to that half of that property. Now, I am a tad of, as long as I've got the floor, do you have the floor if you want me to have?
I was asking who you were representing.
I am representing the people on the north side of the lot you're selling.
816 South 12th Street?
It'll be, it'll be on South 12, it'll be the north lot.
So it's the 816?
Mr. Slove is here on his side of the lot.
I have the question. I'm a little slow because I'm doing the council.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
816 South 12th Street, is that the property we're talking about?
Yes.
Let's cut to the chase. So what's the, what's the disappointment tonight? You're saying that this gentleman never heard that the property was for sale?
Mr. Burnett, you missed the whole point of what I've spoken about. I want public information. I'm sorry, I want access to public information. I have a ten-day window to ask for copies, and that ten-day window was not afforded this citizen. I cannot apply for the form, fill it out, wait ten days to see if the city's going to respond on it. I'm only asking that you delay the sale of these properties. Now, the neighbor on South Fifth happens to be here tonight.
Could I, could I ask the name of who lives at 816 South 12th?
I do not know Chad's parents' name. I'm only talking to the son.
Well, I think we got him right here.
Name of the inmate? Yes.
Oh, did you make it back? Because Chad said you were en route back.
Right, I just got back.
Did you ever receive a letter from the city?
Because I've moved on.
I understand, but did you have a letter waiting for you when you got back?
I hadn't been home yet, I just moved in.
Tell Chad I did speak on your behalf tonight. Tell him I did honor my word.
Dad.
That's your son-in-law, or your son?
No.
What's your son's name?
Jay.
Jay, I said Chad, you were right, it's Jay.
Right.
I've never met Chad. I talk to him only on the phone.
So for my, my own clarification, is Mr. Claybaum representing you?
No.
No.
I am not.
Okay.
I represented only to tell his son over the phone that I would ask that the property not be sold unless this gentleman was assured that he gets half the lot. That's what I told Jay that I would do for you.
Well, we've been on vacation, and I just, Jay just called him.
I know, he did.
I was in Florida, we were in South by Pella, and I just got.
So, I'm sorry, what's your name?
Sarver, Roger.
Roger, Sarver, so Roger. Since you're here, let's hear from the horse's mouth. What are your thoughts on this whole thing?
Come on up, Roger, take the podium.
My thought, this issue, why half of it is available, Roger? Well, I told, uh...
We thought.
Yeah, and I told, uh...
Consider a total agreement on the whole thing. You're a total dream.
Yeah, we've talked earlier.
So what's this about? You don't know?
I don't know.
We appreciate your time, but it seems like these folks got it figured out.
Me and Jerry, I spoke earlier about this, and we agreed we'd eat the half if it became available.
But since Mr. Sarver had said you responded back, and you said you would like all or half of the property available.
So I talked to the fellas at the city, uh...
You talked to Nate, probably.
Nate. And he asked me if I was interested, and I said, "Yes, in half or all, whatever available." And he just ordered that.
Larry, I'm a little confused. I'm a little confused. What are you up here talking about tonight when these people are all okay with the whole thing? You've got to help me with this, Larry.
Okay, I'm going to help you, Steve, I really am.
Make it quick. We've got a lot of people here with other things to do, so...
I'm here to tell you and ask you, how can we citizens get public information? How can we get it when the timeframe does not allow people like this gentleman back here? He was to receive a letter from the city about this property. Jerry Slove was to receive a letter in regards to this property.
Larry, you got some, you got the, oh, I don't know what you're doing up there. Let me tell you something.
Jerry's daughter was notified, right?
My daughter got a letter.
Amy answered.
I didn't get a letter, my daughter got it.
Okay, Steve, let me, let me take and ask Bill if I can use his name. Bill, did you ever get a letter from the city? No. And this is what kind of made me mad. This is the other property owner on Fifth Street.
He hasn't, we haven't been able to check his mail.
No, no, that's the gentleman back there.
So what's your thoughts?
The gentleman up here has...
I'm serious, I mean, what's your thoughts on it?
I was notified by phone because I just moved into that property.
Got you, sure. So somebody did contact you, they didn't do it by mail, they did it by phone?
I contacted Gary about my street condition.
Yeah.
And I asked him, my, told my neighbor, told me I had to maintain that section of property.
Sure.
So I had Gary on the phone about my street. I said, "Why am I maintaining city property?" He said, "Because if we maintain it, we'll wait until it gets a foot tall."
Yeah.
I said, "Okay." And that's when he said, "Would you be interested in purchasing that property?" And I said, "Well, I don't know, yes, maybe."
Sure.
That's what I was told. So the city engineer, Nate got in touch with me about, less than a week later, and told me the circus dances. I said, "Okay." And that's, you know...
Steve, when city property is sold, irregardless of where it is, why can't we citizens have access to the paperwork you're supposed to file?
Larry, let me make a deal with you. Let's save all these people a lot of time. You call me the next time you got a concern, and I'll talk to you one-on-one so we don't waste all these folks' time. Because it sounds like the people that are involved know what was going on, and everything's up and up. So I'm a little confused. I, I'm not confused, I know why you're up there, you feel like you got to be. I'll be glad to talk to you after the meeting. Will that make you happy?
Not right after this meeting. Not tonight, because I'm not going to be there.
Pick a time and place, and I'll be there.
Steve, will you?
Let's save these folks' time.
Will you please keep in mind, as this, as this council sits here tonight?
Sure.
You have a procedure to dispose of city property. It's not oral, it's written. Nobody's got anything in writing unless Akilish can give me a copy of what he sent out. And now I will relinquish the podium. If Akilish will furnish those documents he sent out two weeks ago, a month ago, on these properties, and now you can have your podium back.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else please speak?
Yeah.
Mayor, my point out, that information was available at least March 14 online, usually a week before then. It was a setting of public hearing that you did, because you had a meeting on this. We've had the public hearing, and the input is... We've had the public hearing, and the input. All of that is available.
And we notified everybody that it was adjacent?
Without, without.
Right. First rights. Okay. So I'll go ahead and close the public hearing this time. Is it the council's wish to offer all three at the same time? Or shall I just split them and go to one at a time? Okay, so do I have a motion to do all three? Okay, let's get the motion first, do we have a motion to do all three?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, we have the motion, second, Scott.
Offer the not interested property, about what we do with that, just continuing to maintain it. Offer it to the other people, or I guess I have to decide this period.
Mayor, Council, what's generally been happening is the property owners have been doing their community service by mowing it, maintaining it at a much higher level than we do. Generally, they're being maintained by property owners that are interested in it. I think we're just, as we come across these strange parcels, we're trying to give the mapping system and the legal documents to reflect the actual value of these parcels for the city.
So we have a motion to second, and we sell all three, one dollar plus filing and recording costs. Roll call, please.
First take?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Takes us to item B. Consider resolution approving alley improvement project. Our community volunteers, named the Alley Cats, have organized and developed a concept to enhance the existing public right-of-way or alley located between 109 South Market Street and 115 South Market Street. Concept, as included with this communication, outlines clients to install public art entrance of the alleyway, as well as throughout the space, providing tables and chairs for public use or reservation with Main Street off the corner, and the installation of overhead ambient lighting. The project is intended to encourage additional pedestrian traffic, pedestrian activity, and use of the alleyways in downtown. The complement of City Square Park is an outdoor event and you can further link the downtown business district with shopping and dining opportunities that are in nearby buildings. Presentation of the project concept is going to be made by members of the Alley Cat volunteer group. There they are.
Okay, thank you.
The podium is yours.
Thank you, I'm Ann Brower, and I want to thank you for allowing us to present this evening. I'd like to start out by introducing our committee. We are Sherry Babra, Karen Hapner, Teresa Grayheck, and Deb Beech. And we are Alley Cats, but we're also just average Oskaloosa citizens. We're not representing any business or group. We've been working on this project for about the last seven months, hoping to open the project in the summer of 2016. The alley, you probably all know by now, is the alley between Smokey Row and Bridle Dreams. The reason that we chose this particular alley is because this is the corridor from the mall to our historic and beautiful downtown square. So this is not an original idea with us. In fact, many groups and people have talked about opening up this corridor for the past, I don't know if the mall's been there for years, I think. So it was originally conceived, actually, when the mall was built. And that is why you can walk from the center court of the mall east through the alley to the downtown square. And also, there are alley projects completed in surrounding communities such as Fairfield, Indianola, and Winterset. I know others are in the work. And these really provide some unique space for gathering in open air, which I think we all enjoy in other towns and cities that we've been to. So we think it's time that we finally open this pathway from the mall to the downtown square, as well as install a gathering space. The space that we're talking about is the front part of the alley. It is sixteen by one hundred and ten feet, that is just the front part only. And if you think about sixteen feet, that's about as wide or wide as most of our living rooms. So it's a very cozy, yet large enough space to, we hope, host many events and activities for our community. And we plan that all events that are programmed for the alley will continue rain or shine. We are partnering with the mall and with Smokey Row so that if we have inclement weather in the alley, the event will still take place. Because it is our objective with this project to promote the entire downtown area as a gathering space. We have received unanimous support from the Historical Preservation Commission. We have spoken to almost all the businesses on the downtown square, as well as many off the square, and we have overwhelming support for this project. We are aware of Bridle Dreams' concerns and their issues that they have. In fact, we included that list in the packet you received before the meeting that they provided us. So it is our real sincere hope that together with the city, that we can address their concerns, and that this project would really enhance their business, as well as provide a great space for their tenants. We have received estimates from local businesses, and we have a forty thousand dollar budget for this project. We have already received ten thousand dollars in committed funds from local business and from the Golden Goose Club, should this project go forward. So this is going to be funded all with private funds. The rest of the money we plan to raise through selling advertising and also by selling sponsorships for historical markers in the alley. And the historical markers are so that our community and people that visit here can start, can understand the diverse and rich history that we have in this community, as well as get to know some of those people that have come from here and have achieved international, national and international success, you know, both past and present. So as I said, there will be no tax dollars going for this project. So we hope that we can have your support, and we hope that you can help us build a culture where people will gather downtown, and where we can showcase and preserve our history, as well as begin to build for our future. So with that, I'll turn it over to Teresa to present our PowerPoint.
Hello, Teresa Grayheck, thank you for your time and consideration. This, I think we've spoken with most of you. I think everyone sees the value of this project, at least I've worked through a couple little things. John and I traveled quite a bit last year. Everywhere we went, there's outdoor spaces, everywhere. The alleys are being used for beautification, many reasons. And we do have some ugly alleys. And the Smokey Row one is our main gem. You're in our square, you look at ugly. And there's, we can't do a lot with the buildings. We had talked and proposed about that, like painting them. The brick, because of the condition of it, it can handle any improvement, so we have found an alternate way to beautify it. So preserving our heritage while building our future. This is the alley as it is today. These are pictures that, we've actually kind of lived in this alley since September. You know, kind of looking at the vibe of it, the traffic, the noise, is it a good space to do? So this is what, currently, when you're walking across, this is what you see. Just overflowing dumpsters, mattresses, furniture. This is what some of our concepts, as we did travel around, we want to bring in all of Mahaska County. There are music, our ag, Lacy's Sports, George Daley, the recreation trails, education. We have a lot to offer. And we look at this as one little hub to showcase all of it for our visitors coming, because almost everyone that comes to our town, you'd have to admit, goes to Smokey Row. It is a gem up there, it is a huge draw. We have worked with Cunningham's to kind of conceptualize our drawing. We wanted to work with the ag tanks. Those will be house plants, will be in there during the season. They will be housed either at the mall or William Penn, so that we can reuse them. And then we'll have metal scapes designed to showcase, again, some of our local heritage. Those will be in there in the off-season, that will fill those. These will be all modular. Everything we're putting in the alley is modular, so it can be moved out for any reasons. If it needs cleaned, or if a building needs to be addressed for maintenance. These will have skids on them, and they can be moved. We found this picture, and it is remarkably like what our Smokey Row and that alley, what it can actually look like. And if I was driving through town and I saw that, I'm gonna stop, I want to see what's going on in there. And I think that will be a draw. Whether people are coming to our town or not, they'll remember it. We look at it for demonstrations, farmer's market being in there, which would create a lot more traffic. We do a lot of those things, like by the courthouse right now. There's no businesses over there. So if we could generate something in this alley, the foot traffic would increase greatly. Bridle showers, meetings, graduations, anything you could really think of. Entertainment, we'd like to see that. And we kind of look at this space as a city park, how you would maybe use that, you know, some of the shelters. You know, having some of the different things going on there. Dance recitals, Music Square in the mall, having their recitals come right out to there. And we truly feel, once we create this space, and it is a natural walkway to the mall, I think entrepreneurs will look at it a little differently and say, "Hey, maybe that mall's not such a crazy space to do it," or some of the empty downtown buildings. This is the top view of how we see it, we'll have lights going across. Right now, our plan is, we'll be seating for fifty. It can hold up to one hundred and ten people. We have checked, done that with the fire in the city. And this is where you'll be standing and looking out onto the square as you sit there. This is something that, actually, Tessa Bell, and she's here today, she, we kind of, she's a graphic design artist, and this young thing from Des Moines, who did not know us, we kind of gave her the idea of what we, kind of what we wanted, and we wanted to showcase Mahaska County. She came up with this on a first drawing. It has our Indian princess, that has music, it has coal mining, farming, ag. It really does represent all of it. This is something that we see at the alley. And again, we got unanimous approval from the Historical Committee, which was awesome. And we hope to have some lighting there, again, so as you're driving by, that is going to draw your attention. This would be on the backside of that wall, and it is a wooden wall divider arch. And those would be two barn doors that will slide open, that will stay, actually stay open, unless there was a venue in there that you'd want to close it. We probably envision just locking those off unless there wasn't a bet that someone would want to open those up. And that's it, we thank you so much for your time.
Any questions for the folks during the presentation?
Yeah, great idea, I love it. Are we going to be responsible for taking in, taking out the furniture? Is this a seasonal thing, or?
Uh, we are going to, since everything is modular and all-weather, we plan to leave our tables and chairs, the livestock planters, and the signs will be all-weather. So we plan to leave those in in the off-season. Yeah.
And are we responsible for the alleys, or?
And we will, yeah. The city has a great, we will have trash receptacles as part of our budget. The city has told us that they will pick it up once a week. If we need more than that, we know that we may have to deal with that. We will have a maintenance budget. We have some ideas of how we will raise funds in the future to handle the maintenance. And we are going to continue to have an alley committee working. So we're not going to just put this in and abandon it, we're going to continue it, work with it, make sure it's successful. We've tried to think of everything, but we know there's things that are going to come up that we haven't thought of, and we're going to be available to address those all those issues.
Where do you plan on putting the dumpsters?
Oh, the dumpsters will be moved to the north-south alley. So about...
Just put it on the north end?
About north, yes.
So that means the trucks have to back all the way through the alley to get the different dumpsters in there?
And that was something that we had talked about when we first started this project, and talked to the building inspector, I think it's in the title. And said that that would be possible to do that.
It's what they do today.
Uh-huh. The tally handle already, okay, yeah.
Any further questions?
I'm up, comment?
If, well, for me, while we've got folks at the podium, I want to ask first if we can give them a chance to sit down. Any further questions for the presenters?
Are you gonna talk like we talked with Mrs. Van Ghorp, again?
Yes, we have reached out, we did receive a letter from their attorney.
I know.
Yeah, and we enclosed that with your packet. And we have reached out through Mike Gorman, their attorney, twice, and followed up to see if they had, we want to talk to them. We really feel that we can work together, and...
They aren't answering you?
No, no, they have not responded.
Okay, and it's, first for you and for who you work for, just my opinion here, on the list, A, C, and D, D. You may have an issue, and I think those need to be discussed with them. All the rest of them, I don't think you're going to want to use those as points, because there's probably problems the city has neglected to enforce that will affect those. So I'm just sharing that with you.
I was not the one that wrote the letter down.
No, I know, but you're here, and they are here.
Right, they're there, I'm here, but, yeah, they wrote that letter. Actually, I've not even seen the letter that they wrote, I've just talked with them verbally over the phone, through a conversation.
And I'm just sharing that, again, A, C, and maybe D are the ones that you probably, I would hope you can get together. You know, the world has trouble getting it together and listening to the other side, and those are things you need to work on.
We have sincerely reached out to them. In fact, I called Mike Gorman when we knew we'd be on the agenda tonight to tell him, please let them know that the meeting would be tonight, and also that I would love to talk to them about this project.
Are you not talking to them directly because they got an attorney involved?
Well, that would be our, my thought, if they had an attorney write us that...
Well, I'm just asking, I've talked to them twice, and they are hard to get a hold of, so I...
No, and I have talked to them directly, and so have Teresa. But then after that, we received a letter from their attorney. Yeah.
And I would like to just clarify, which it does state in your packet, our very first questions, when this project got brought to Karen Hapner, who was the power that be that could help us implement this, we really are private citizens, just trying to make something happen. We had two people to go see, Smokey Row and Bridle Dreams. I personally spoke with Judy Deah, and told her what we were doing, oh, Van Ghorp, sorry, Van Ghorp, and said, "Can we move your dumpster?" One question was asked of both businesses, and she said, "I do not see a problem with that." And we told them we would like to relocate it to the back alleys. As we moved forward and contacted them again for fixing up their building at our expense, the doorways and everything, that's when all this came out.
Those entries, as we've talked, I mean, they have a right to change those.
Oh, absolutely, and I own a business in town. And I am grateful that you guys consider both sides, yeah, so. And we hope they will, and we sincerely think that we can resolve issues. And we actually think that this can be something that would very much enhance their business, as well as create opportunity for all of the businesses downtown, as well as for our own family and friends, and to attract visitors. So we think it can be a good thing for everyone. Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks.
Any further questions? Otherwise, I'll lay the table motion.
Well, I'm gonna put somebody on the spot here. Is there anybody here from UBS that wants to say anything? It's up to you.
I'm just watching and...
Okay, that's fine, it wasn't fair, but you knew I'd probably do it, okay.
So back up, do we have a motion?
No motion.
Okay, the motion is to support the alley project?
Yep.
Okay, can we have a second? Any further discussion?
Okay, one other comment, and I've had this through email with several of you. You know, my big goal is, we need to get the state out of the highway. We need to get that state road out of Oskaloosa. That would give us a lot more freedom. Right now, you're asking people, and they're arguing with Smokey Row, they're double parking on a state road, and I'm not sure that, you know, that's being tolerated. But I'm not sure how long that will be tolerated. I've said this, and nobody's paying attention, I don't think. We could get the DOT, if they do it, to route that road up the bypass and come down Ninety-two and turn at the Herald, which is a terrible intersection. But then we could have four sides to our square, and a lot of us are excited about that, so.
Any further comments? Roll call, please.
Walling?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
First take?
Okay, I want it, passes. Okay, moving on, item C. Consider request to direct staff to study the parking restrictions on CMU East between North and Eleventh Street. Council members for Caliguri are requesting that city staff study and develop a recommendation on the current parking restrictions on CMU East between North and Eleventh Street and North Park Street. Request is based upon a request to improve or to reduce congestion specifically on the north side of CMU East along the property owned by the hospital. If city council confirms with the request, staff will research parking in the area, conduct the survey of the residents impacted by a potential change to the current parking restrictions on this portion of CMU East. So, do we have a motion supporting that? I would hope to hear from Brudetta. We got the motion in the second, okay. Any comments?
And this is just to have a study?
Just to have a study, I mean, the reason I talk about it is that I drive it every day. I literally drive it four times a day, to work, home from work, and then home and back for lunch. And you see people parked up in that meeting, and I've always wondered, I mean, you know, ambulances come and go... And, uh, you see people parked up in that meeting. You see people, and I've always wondered, I mean, you know, ambulances come and go and it's just silly to me that there's parking on the side of the street that the ambulance has to look past to come in and out of that. And I know there's a lot of burglaries. There's not been an accident. I'm suggesting we don't wait till there is one. Um, they have to look past traffic to get in and out of the, or past parked cars to leave them. Going in may not be that much of a deal, but coming out, they're probably in a hurry when they're leaving to go somewhere. And, um, it makes sense to me. And I, we have parking lots, there especially. I think people are parking parking lots.
Well, they make a lot of noise to pick them out. Well, it might be similar. It was not so much the old side there, but, and, uh, exit out of the hospital there. And it was a complication. I seen ambulance coming out.
You're talking to the exit to the south?
Oh, yeah, the, uh, south.
Yeah, on the, on the CF.
Yeah. And there was a few cars parked pretty close to that curb or corner, you know, and it was very, heading, uh, east. And he had to wait.
Yeah.
Give up those cars and all that stuff. Now, that's two times. I seen it, but it probably would have been.
I bet if you talk to ambulance truck driver, there's a lot more where he'd get through that parking lot. Where he's going to get the heck out of there that he is.
He makes the street.
I, I'm going to be sensitive about the parking on the street. I think the hospital should dictate to their people, they don't park on the street, but the citizens on the street may want to park.
Yeah, I, I'm like you, Steve. I drive that street repeatedly. And from North Hart up to the hospital, I need to decide those are usually no problem. And there's two businesses there. I mean, lying down, there are some parking, but normally other that's a problem. Yeah. Is it, is it hospital employees mainly that you think?
Well, I see different cars. So, absolutely, there's some hospital employees because I see them come down around the triangular area and then go back and they'll smoke, you know, that kind of thing. So, I know some of it's that, but there's different cars every day, um, typically, which would indicate to me that it's either different employees, which usually wouldn't be the case, or it's probably, I don't know what. I'm guessing somebody walked into the hospital, so they parked in the parking lot, they're parking out front, walking across the grasses. So, I can't tell you that for sure because I don't stand there long, but, uh, with different cars, I've got to worry that's the case anyway.
But this is just a good study.
Yeah. I talked to Kelly Brooklander already. He lives around the corner. And, um, uh, my intent is not to take it, you know, if you look at the map, my intent is to take it to the same, well, I take it to where they own the property on the other side, where the hospital owns the property up to where Brook, the fence is between Brooklander and there. That was my desire, not to go through the corner. So, um, because there is, as you can see, no parking, there's parking a lot on the other side of the street there. So, um, and that takes you well beyond the entrance to the, is my first concern, was the entrance. If you take it up to that fence, there's plenty of room for somebody to see coming in and out of there. So, that was my desire, not to go away with.
So, we got a motion in the second. Any further thoughts? Roll call, please.
Burnett?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
No.
Moore?
It's just a study, yes.
First egg?
No.
Walling?
I believe yes for the study, but I've already said I'm going to be sensitive about the parking.
Okay, that passes four two. Okay, you get us to the end of the agenda. Now, report on item, city staff, city manager.
Mayor Council, it's everyone's favorite time of the year. The, uh, city is hosting its.